Okay, I believe we're up to 6:30 now. So I'll make a motion to open the Village of Pittsburgh Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for tonight, May 15th, 2024.
Second. Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Blisstra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So I'm officially designating David Wilks to serve tonight as alternate, since we have a vacancy. I don't know if Jared will be coming, we'll see. Anyway, so the order of review tonight is as listed on our agenda. We're going to start with 25 East U Terrace, five Sutherland, and then 50 State is going to be last. Is anyone here from 50 State? No? Okay. Okay, well, let's start with 25 East U Terrace.
Excuse me, let's do the conflict disclosure first.
Thank you. Does anyone have any conflict of interest to disclose?
I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
I do not. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mindy.
You're welcome.
So, let's get right into 25 East U Terrace then. So if you want, you were not allowed to participate a lot last time, but if you want to give a brief introduction to what you're proposing, well, listen to what you have, and then we'll discuss it and then ask you any questions we may have. But our primary things we're interested in is how this would impact the properties next to you. Since this is a very long way from adjacent properties and it's a big property, I'm guessing that's not so much. Like, by all means, go ahead and present what your thoughts are. Some of the things we're concerned about are lighting, drainage, landscaping, just trying to know what you're doing for those. But if you're, obviously for drainage, if you're 40 feet from your neighbor's property, it's not, wouldn't be an issue most likely.
Yep. So the house was built in 1940. We believe in the mid-'90s, an addition was put on. And essentially, our plan is to go back to the original footprint, then come out with a 10-foot, single-story extension, and then rebuild the addition as a one-and-a-half-story section off of that. The lighting will remain very similar. So I think there are only two exterior lights, one at the front door, one at the back door, which while located differently, will be roughly in the same position. We're going to continue to use flash lamps for the drainage, which is how it currently drains. And landscaping, our initial plan is just to plant grass basically everywhere that gets disturbed, and then down the road, we can come up with plans for future landscaping.
Okay, yeah, we don't heavily regulate residential landscaping. That's pretty much what most people say, they're going to replant the lawn. That's fine.
But, yeah, I mean, one side of the house, a bunch of power lines, neighbors, three sides on the street, I would say they're 50 to 70 yards from the house in all directions. And really, what we're adding on is on the most hidden side of the house, unless you're standing in the driveway, it's almost won't even notice it.
Okay. I'm not going to have any questions for you, other than make a one about the lighting fixtures. So you said you're going to have lighting fixtures next to the doors, which are generally required by building code. And our code allows for single bulb light fixtures, 75 watt equivalent or less, as just permitted. And often, we like to see is people to have light fixtures with some kind of shroud around them, so the light goes down without spreading out. But even if you are permitted to use ones, even that aren't covered. But do you have any issue if you just agree to put light fixtures in that are 75 watts or less with a single bulb next to your?
Well, we want to replace them with essentially what you have now, which I think are like, no, they must be less than 75, but it's too sort of candle-looking light bulbs.
Two, so it has two bulbs?
Yes. Currently, they have two bulbs.
Then I think we might need to actually approve those. But, well, we want, any thoughts what we should do with that? We don't have any specs on them, we don't, I don't personally care very much, I don't think this is going to bother anybody, but...
Even though the existing fixtures have two bulbs?
I mean, I have to take a look, we have to take a look at our code, and Steve is not here. We can approve, the question, we can approve things that aren't just allowed as of right. So as of right, a resident without a permit can put in a single bulb fixture, 75 watts or less. If they want something else, they can come to us. So we can, you know, if you want to put in a bright pole light that lights up a chunk of your patio or something like that, we can approve that. My question is, what should we do with it without having any specs on these? If they're two bulbs, 40 watts or less, I'm very...
Well, yeah, I don't know if you have access to what we submitted for part of meeting.
Yeah, I'm trying to pull it up for you, so...
If you have the cut sheets.
If you have the cut sheets on it, then, yeah.
That would be helpful. And while you're looking for it, may I ask, please state your name and address for the record.
Our problem is the 25 East U Terrace.
Thank you. What's the best way to share this with you? Because, yeah, they, they do have the cut sheets for HPV, not knowing that you guys are going to ask for them, so...
Well, if they're available, they're normally required as part of site plan applications. But most people, if they just comply with the ones permitted by code, we don't ask too many details. So people that haven't decided what their light fixtures are yet, that's how we've typically handled that. So if you can print that out, we can at least look at it and add it to the record.
Yep, I'll get copies for you, okay?
That would be great.
Yeah, except we need to approve, we...
We need to do it today.
Yeah, let's do it today.
What's the wattage per bulb?
What's that?
The wattage per bulb?
I don't know, I'm kind of familiar with those little...
I have those, and they're, mine are 25 watt.
25?
Yeah. Given that you're like 50 feet from the property line, I don't, I don't see how this is...
Well, yeah, exactly.
I mean, if they're 25 watt, then it would be less than 75.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, so anecdotally, have you had any complaints from neighbors to date?
No.
So I, I have a neighbor with just spotlights on their garage, and I remember being woken up by him on Black Friday, when they woke up at 5:00 in the morning and turned all their lights on to go shopping. And so that's the kind of thing we're, you know, looking to avoid, so...
You're so far back from your neighborhood, I don't see it.
I don't see it as an issue either.
Trying to keep it as close to what existed as possible, so, so, thank you too much.
Yeah, most residential things, it doesn't come up as a concern. It's been a while since we've had someone with a bunch of lights. Thinking, one of the ones on Sutherland Street, I think, did. Anyway, I guess we'll wait for Alexandria to get back, and then, and then we'll open the public hearing. Any other questions, anyone have?
I already have them printed in the HPV sheet, so I didn't want to reprint them.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Those are two different ones, so I'm terrified to dispute.
So they're 40 watts?
Yep.
Yeah. 40 watts.
Okay, and these will be next to your doors. Okay. So, you said front door and back door. Okay, given how, yeah, I'm, we agree, we're all not very concerned. Okay. All right. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing then. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. A second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Blisstra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, does anyone in the audience wish to provide any comments on the project? Yeah? Okay. Is there anyone online?
We have participants online, no one in the Q and A, or their hands raised.
Okay, so if anyone online would like to raise comments and present anything to us, please click the raise hand button, and we'll call your name, and you can share any comments you'd like.
No hand.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing then.
Second. Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Chair Blisstra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. I have very few concerns. Any concerns? Actually, I'm very, you can, to have zero concerns here.
Yeah, I agree.
It's a long, okay. So we had a draft resolution here, which is our normal fill-in-the-blank thing. Okay, so we can go through this, if anyone wants to chime in with thoughts. LWRP is NA, not applicable. Vehicular traffic is unchanged. Adequacy and arrangement of pedestrian and bicyclist access, I'm going to say not applicable. Compatibility of proposed uses to adjacent uses, all are residential. Adequacy of off-street parking, loading, and access, it's unchanged. Adequacy of landscaping and screening, lawn, I guess, is essentially unchanged, right?
Yes.
So lawn is being, lawn is being replanted after construction. Proposed signage is not applicable, there's no signs. Adequacy of outdoor lighting, so I think we can just say the light fixtures by the doors are a long distance from neighboring properties and do not present any concerns. So our primary concern is just light, like, bright lights shining on other people's houses, but that's not an issue here. So the drainage, I think, adequacy of drainage, I think we can say the same thing, it's a long way from adjacent properties and won't adversely impact them. Okay, the next one was adequacy of water and sanitary sewer systems, it's not applicable, you're not changing any utilities. Adequacy of waste and trash management plans, that's not applicable. Adequacy of snow removal plans, not applicable. And whether the proposal will adversely affect health, safety, and general welfare of adjacent property owners and the community. I'll just say no.
Yeah, I agree.
Excellent.
And we've heard no concerns from the fire marshal or building inspector. So I think, he's not here, so we'll just cross off 15, I think. Okay, so, conditions of approval, we usually, we have two of them in here. Should we add, we've often added one from lighting and color. I forgot to add that, we sometimes put that in there. So, just as a comment, I'm sure you have no trouble complying with it. Oftentimes, when people put in light fixtures, we ask them to do is just put in standard color ones, you know, just like the color of standard incandescent bulbs, not super yellow ones, not super blue ones. I assume you won't have any trouble complying with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, is that reasonable to put in a condition, or you want to not worry about it?
But put it in.
Okay. So we can say light bulbs, what we usually say shall be 2,700 to 3,000 Kelvin, which is incandescent bulb color.
So you're kind of bringing the house back to a more cohesive 1940 look, would you say, updated?
The style of the sort of one-and-a-half story is very similar to the style of the main house, and then there's sort of this 10-foot, single-story, copper roof separator that signifies, like, this is the original, this is the addition. But, yes, architecturally, they're very similar.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can be pretty...
No, it's a nice-looking project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, light color, keep them normal. The other thing is, we have a condition of approval usually that the Historic Preservation Board shall approve your plans. And the other one is, you need to obtain a building permit within one year of the date of an approval. And if you can't do that for some reason, you can seek to have this renewed. But both those two things are code requirements. So if the other board rejects it in the approval year, it will get rejected, will be overturned. So anyway, none of those should be a big deal for you. So with that said, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for 25 East U Terrace.
I'll second.
Sorry. And I'll just say, I'll just say with the, for the reasons discussed, and what the discussions, and what the conditions of approval discussed.
And I will second that.
May I just ask that, when Alexandria finalizes it, that she put in the date of the site plan? It's really small, but it looks to me to be like April 21st, 2024?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I know where to find it.
Thank you.
See, one, it says January 28, 2024? Okay, so I'll put the, fill in the date.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Blisstra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
The toner, we're saying you need to replace a whole package.
So you get a couple copies? Or no copies?
It won't even take them after it finishes all those packets, so you just want to share them with the board, or?
Yeah, I guess we can pass them around and discuss them and see what people think.
I don't want to take up too much time, you don't want to, for your face.
Okay. The next one is five Sutherland Streets. All right, we've seen you a few times now.
Yes, hello everyone, thanks again for seeing us.
Okay, so, what's new, what's changed?
Nothing's really changed, I think the last time we were here, the first two items, the impervious surface and the height, I think we talked about that, and then the site plan last confirmation, right, Alexandria, so we had to come back here, and we decided that we wrote on everything, I think, tonight. Just as a follow-up to, I think we addressed everything that you had asked about last time, the only thing that I didn't have last time were some pictures of the lighting. Since, talked to, this is kind of a, someone else in the village that had an approved garage, so this is kind of the, the lighting, the gooseneck 70 watt, is kind of, in, in black instead of silver, but that was something that has already been approved by someone else in the village, so we kind of, are going to try and go with that.
Yep, I have some same ones next to my doors. Or similar, not the same one, but that type of thing.
Yeah, like a gooseneck, single bulb, 75 or less, that would be...
Yeah, that's what I have, mine has a little light sensor in it, so it turns on automatically, which is kind of nice.
Yeah, I will do this. So I think other than that, that unless you want us to go over it again, I'm not sure.
And those are just going to be next to the, so we're working about the locations for those.
So we probably, we could probably put one on the east side.
Oh, the garage door?
The garage.
Okay. All right, I don't see any concerns about those light fixtures. All right, the, the other things, let's see, topics we had discussed were lighting, the impervious surface, you fixed your calculations for that. Drainage, you addressed that by putting in a drywall in the side yard. The height and architecture were things, you went to the HPV, they asked you to change the roof pitch.
Roof line, yes, to match the, more, to better match the front building, in our regular house, yeah.
Okay, and, and, so, in the drawings that are here, just so I understand... That's what you said last time. Maybe if you can read the page. So you, so what you have here, if you have two roof lines here, and what you propose is to build this, right?
Yes, this would be, this would kind of match the 512 or 612 roof line of the front of the house.
Yeah, here is, here's one of the reasons why I'm asking, this is, this is a garage that we approved previously.
That's so funny, that's where that is from, I talked to Shannon, I'm friends with her. So, yeah, this is a kind of the, this is kind of the same...
So, what it has, is the front portion of it is, kind of is like this, and then it has these large shed dormers on the side, which add more standing room inside there. I wasn't sure if that was what you were trying to do with the shed dormers, because those are a nice way to make more functional room without it looking quite as big.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, we could, we could do that. I think it's the Preservation Board, what they want to see, if they wanted to see, rather than dormers, see it straight to match, or if they're, if they would allow us, we'd be definitely open to doing that if they allow us to do it, but that...
Yeah, that adds more character.
Kind of breaks it up a little bit, but keeps, keeps it with the front of the house.
Yeah, yeah, they'll keep this pitch, would be more compatible to the house. Anyway, this is just something that we looked at before.
Yeah.
And...
That's where those lights are from, actually.
Yeah.
That is so funny, yeah. Okay, thank you. This is from that same plant. Yeah, so, good, so you're familiar with that one, because that's kind of what we want to model it after.
Okay. All right, the other topic was protecting the trees, did you get that report from?
So I talked to Steve, he sent me some information, he didn't send me the report, but I texted him before the meeting, he said he's going to look for it and send it over to me, and he did send me some information in a text, but he wanted to look for the report instead of...
Okay. I'll forward it to him again, and he'll do it. But I'm just going by memory here, but what, basically what the landscape architect did when looking at the trees, this is the White House on Sutherland Street. And I'm going by memory here, but basically what they said to do is put a deep layer of mulch in the area around construction, I think approximately a foot deep, and fence it off with, with a barrier, a plastic barrier, a temporary fence, or something like that, to keep construction vehicles going on it. And they studied a particular radius from the trunk for it, it depends on, some, it depends on the tree species. I recall they, they said one of the trees nearby there is virtually indestructible, and as long as you don't obliterate more than, like, half the roots or something like that, it's fine. So, that was kind of the gist of it, is keep the construction vehicles from running over the roots. If they do, if there's a mulch layer there, that'll help protect them, and don't dig, it'll change the soil depth and within, you know, some, some distance of the, the tree. But, since you haven't gotten that yet, I don't know, I'm not really inclined to hold anything up over that with anyone. I haven't heard any complaints from the neighbors.
We need a copy anyway.
And you want to do them too, so, you'll get that stuff, review it with Steve, and your, whoever your advisors are, and I guess I'm content with letting that, that be, letting you sort that out.
We should, yeah, definitely try to maintain it, we want that barrier as well.
Yeah. And if you want to call in an arborist to talk to them about it, you can, probably, I don't, but that's up to you. Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
Public hearing, on the site plan?
Yeah, oh, yeah, we got to open that.
Yeah.
All right, that's, thank you for the reminder, I'll make a motion to open the site plan. I forget these are open, it's easy, we forget some of these details.
Second.
I'll second.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Blisstra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, does anyone in the room wish to make comments on this application? Okay, no comment, any comments online?
All right.
Thanks for coming.
Is that your backpack, or?
No, that's me, yeah.
I have no hand in the comments.
Okay, if anyone online would like to comment, please click the raise hand button. Okay. All right, I'll make a motion then to close all the public hearings for variances and the site plan. Second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Chair Blisstra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so in terms of what we're going to do about this, this garage, I know we noted it's large, I think reading the room here, I think we, my general read of everybody is we're content letting the architectural review board work out the architectural details on this.
Right, yep.
Yes, and we know some of the things may change, so I think we need to put some proper wording in our conditions for that. Let's start with the height, since I think that is... Did we have resolutions for these heights?
They're in the paper, but...
In that one, okay.
I saw all three direct resolutions.
Well, I'm going to go with, I'm going to start with looking at our findings from this particular application for height. I can read some of our findings for that, and we can amend them as needed, does that sound reasonable? Okay, so again, this is for... Okay, um, so again, this is for garage height. What we said for this previous one is it will not create an undesirable change. So first of all, the question is whether the, the variance will create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Um, in this previous one, we said it will not create an undesirable change, will enhance the properties along, um, the street, strengthen the identity of other garages with barn-like look, so it will create a desirable change. Does anyone have any thoughts for what we can say? I'm having a hard time saying it'd make a desirable change, given the size of this.
Have you seen the view that we're looking at?
Yeah, yeah.
This, this will be better than that.
Yeah, I liked the first reading, and you're right, you did say that you have a commercial property behind you,
and it provides screening of the parking lot.
How are all I concerned?
Yeah. I, I probably shouldn't say it's barn-like, but other than that, yeah, I think it would, I think we could say it's a desirable change.
Okay, so if we say that the, um, we could say the property behind it is commercial, and there's also power lines, and this will provide screening of those.
You could, you could say that the commercial property behind it's unsightly including power lines. It's kind of a value judgment.
Yeah.
A little bit more project activity too, with the apartments going in there.
Right, yeah, exactly.
You find my copy to scribble on in here. For the resolution.
There is the paper.
Yeah, this one, oh, this is all three, the site plan, thank you. All right. First one was impervious surface. Second one was. So, we talked about screening, the other, what other comments do people have for community character? Should we just say they'll work with the architectural review board to, um, make architectural details compatible? Or not mention that?
I think that's up to the HPPB, actually.
No, but I agree, it's up to the HPPB to figure out what to do with it. Okay, so.
I mean, to, you know, to, um, weigh in on architectural compatibility.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll maybe leave it at that, we can, when we get to, um, the first draft of this, we can revise some of these things a little bit. All right, the next question is whether the benefits sought can be achieved by some other method. And given the need for space and storage, this, um, that really drove a lot of your size and height restriction. So I will say it cannot be achieved under feasible message, and just say the, the size and height dictated by, um, or proposed. This is proposed, uh, uh, needs. So for height, I think we're going from like 14 feet to something like 27 feet, what was the?
12 to 25.6.
Yeah.
12 to 20, yeah, that's what it says, from 12 to 25.6. Um, I would say it is substantial. So whether the proposed variance will have and will or will not have an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. We can just mention screening like we did in A. Yeah, it seemed very similar to that. Yeah, we often do that, we have D, copy A.
We may also say that, um, you know, it's, it's consistent with other garages in the neighborhood.
I didn't see any garages quite that big over there, but.
Well.
There's some, 17 is a pretty big one, I didn't, I mentioned that, I didn't get a chance to do the G. But that was. And the, and the height of the buildings, actually, are a lot, a lot of them are a lot higher than our property, just in terms of total height.
I know, I'm just, one thing is the commercial district next door to you allows much larger, taller buildings.
True, yeah.
So we can also say it was a commercial district.
I think we maybe can say that it's still, um, shorter than the main home, so it's.
It's shorter than the main house, yes. Next one, whether it's self-created, we usually say it is, but this alone does not preclude granting of area variance. We good at that?
Yep.
Whether this is the minimum necessary to provide relief, um, I would, any thoughts on that?
It's not, I don't think, but, uh, again, I don't think it precludes, um, granting the variance.
So sometimes what we say, uh, is making it a little bit smaller would not significantly change impacts.
Yeah.
I'm not, I mean, making it smaller would change impacts.
Feeling it would.
I'm feeling it would. But, I mean, I know, I also know that making it much smaller and still maintaining the height they want for storage, it would be difficult.
Right.
Yes. So, um. Thoughts on what to say about this?
Could we maybe say it's, it's, it's not the minimum, but that the difference between what is proposed and the minimum is justified by the benefits that will result from granting variance?
I, I think it would be better if you could say that it's the minimal, if you, if you could find, if you could find that justifiable. Because you are required to grant the minimum relief necessary.
Yeah, we're required to do that, but the others are.
Then, to talk about, uh, the proportion, um, to the house, and what the, and the pitch that the HPPB has required.
Oh, yes, I said, well, part, so part of the size was dictated by the request.
Yes.
From the HPPB to be compatible with the roof line of the house.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, we can say a substantial reduction on size while meeting the desired functionality. It is, um, really not possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would just.
Or just leave that off.
Leave it off.
Okay. Next thing we have is physical characteristics of the property relevant to the variance request. I mean, one thing I would say it's adjacent to commercial.
Right. Where there's going to be substantial construction, right?
Yes.
And will that building get taller?
I haven't seen the plans. I don't know that they're changing to keep the structure.
Yeah, I think they're changing the outside building.
So the, the new apartments going in next door, they're making zero changes to the exterior, is my understanding.
Well, you don't know that for sure, do you? We haven't seen the plans.
Yeah.
We don't know.
Well, they're changing exterior and come before us, haven't come before us yet. Well, they may in the future, I don't know.
But they may, yeah, we used to.
They may come.
They have the option, right, because of the height, didn't you guys are saying they can?
Yeah, their height, their instructions are taller.
There is the allowance for. The zoning district allows much taller buildings, it allows like 45 or 50 foot tall buildings. I hope they, I, I would rather that.
And they will be looking at that.
Get me my, my house. Make your garage a small one.
Any other thoughts on this, any other findings to comment?
Would you say your lot is smaller in comparison to other places in the neighborhood?
I don't believe so. It looks comparable to, at least on our side of the street, I think it's pretty comparable, I believe.
Yeah, the other side is.
The other side's a little bigger, yeah.
Right.
Just wondering.
Okay, um, all right, well, I don't think I have anything for additional findings then to add. Conditions of approval, um, I guess our standard one, that it'll expire if they don't get a building permit in a year.
Yeah.
I think we should add some things to allow the HPPB to make some amendments. Let me know what people think of this. The, um, we could say the height variance maybe will be the maximum of what's stated in here or what's approved by the HPPB, can we do something like that? If they approve a, a different, a lower height, that that will be.
Well, they can construct something that's lower than the variance, they just can't go above it.
Right.
And, okay, so, so we don't need, all right, I was just wondering, is if they change, if they want to change something, they can't go above it, they can go below it, but the variance doesn't automatically change based on that, but maybe that doesn't matter?
It, it, it doesn't matter, when you have the application that's before you.
Okay. So then for height, I guess that's, that's the only concern then, is that's the maximum they can go to. And, um, okay. Any other thoughts for conditions, any thoughts, Mindy, for conditions?
No, I think you covered it.
Okay.
Well, except unless you want to add one that it's subject to HPPB approval, um, that's a legal requirement.
Um, yeah, I guess we should add a condition that this is conditioned on HPPB approval.
Isn't that kind of implied, anyway, if we grant it?
Well, I'm, if, well, then they don't get a building permit within a year.
Yeah, except that, that the, yeah, it, they would need a, a building permit in a, in a year.
Yeah.
But, I mean, the other thing that you need to be a little concerned about is the variance runs with the land, so if there's.
If we don't have these, it's denied, someone comes back 50 years later and says, I want to build a garage, they could do the same.
If you don't have the conditions, right.
Yeah, if we don't have those conditions.
Particularly since in this case, the HPPB requirement is one of the reasons why you're granting the area variance for height.
Yeah.
So, um.
That, that definitely makes sense. Um, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the area variance for height for the reasons, um, discussed, with the conditions discussed.
Second. Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wokes?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Moustra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, the next one we have is for lot coverage.
Can I ask a question? So when we first drafted these, you dated them for the original public hearing, is it, does it stay that?
It will be denied for today.
It'll be dated for today. Uh, was it 515?
That will also go for, go on for the, uh, there are 25 acres.
Yeah, I'll update all the dates. Okay, going through findings for lot coverage variance, that's the next one. And we are going from 25% to 49.98%, I believe, is what you had in the application.
Yes.
You know that from memory?
Well, yeah, I have brought it with me, I was looking at it before we came.
Yeah.
All right, so, I don't think I had brought a previous finding set for lot coverage on here. But, um, in terms of lot coverage, um, first question is whether it will create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties nearby. And we've usually said that a large number of properties in the building are known to be well above the lot coverage requirement. Also, I think we could say the adjacent property is commercial, and presumably, oh, I don't know what their lot coverage is, I can't say anything about that, they have a large parking lot behind them, but they also have a large front yard. So I don't know what their lot coverage is.
No, no idea. What the boundaries of that lot are.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Where did it start out at 25?
The variance is for 49.9%, for 25 is permitted, is the max, is the limit.
And where did it, where, um, what is it now?
I have a chart in the.
Room chart.
Currently, and right.
Yeah, I'm trying to. Oh, it doesn't have the existing.
But it does have the map there. Want to calculate the existing? Want to calculate the existing?
Add it up.
Yeah, can't be that hard to add up, right?
I could try.
And because, you know, going for what's allowed.
Well, enhance it.
Okay, so we'll add that to all three of those.
All the other ones go two decimal places, right?
Yeah.
And then we should go two decimal.
That's what I was thinking. I was like.
Thank you.
Um, so for D.
But can we just go back to see if we're gonna change, may I suggest that if you're gonna change the number from twenty, from twenty-eight point seven five to that, that other number, that you just make a parenthetical remark saying, including the fifty-four point one-two square foot shed. That way, it'll, it'll explain why the number is not the same as the surface calculations chart.
Um, what was the?
Well, it's still the same, but it's gonna be asphalt. It's included in the driveway number, you know, in, in the new. We included it in that, because it's kinda, it's gonna be asphalt instead of shit, so.
Right.
The existing, I added to the existing, because you guys wanted the existing.
Right, right.
It's included in the driveway number, not mischared.
So forty-nine point ninety-eight correct.
The numbers are still right.
The twenty-eight point seven.
It's just the asphalt.
Okay.
It's still, yeah.
You move that number into.
Into the driveway.
The driveway, right, and remove. What was that number for the size of it?
Uh, fifty-four, uh, the actual size was eight point two feet, but eight point two times six point six, fifty-four point one-two uh, square feet.
Okay. Going on to D. Um, are we okay with just copying comments from A? Okay, so that was, the proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district. And again, A, we talked about large number of properties have high lot coverage, they have a drainage plan, and we mentioned adding a porch enhances character. Um, the alleged difficulty is self-created, and this does not preclude granting an area variance. Next one is whether this is the minimum necessary to provide relief. Um, I think this is basically the minimum needed to achieve your goals for what you wanted, right?
Mm-hmm.
And leftover, which is already non-conforming.
Right.
Yeah. Next thing, any physical characteristics of the property relevant to this request? I can't think of much.
Well, just again, um, backs up to the commercial property.
Mm-hmm. So adjacent to a commercial property and parking lot?
Yeah, with the paved parking lot. Um, I don't know if you wanna also mention, you know, their physical characteristic is that currently the house is set back further than other houses on the street, and the porch will bring it into alignment.
Okay, sounds good.
No, it's good point.
Probably bring it into alignment and non-conformity.
Right.
Been there.
See you, Justin.
Any other finding or comment? I think, um, we should make, add the same conditions, expires in a year, and HPP approval is required.
Actually, for both of these, if I may suggest that HPP approval is required for this project.
And again, if they change anything, uh, if they would be making things smaller, most likely.
Right.
Okay, the next one is the site plan. Okay. Oh, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't vote on that yet, did we?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the area variance for lot coverage for the reasons discussed with the conditions discussed.
I'll take number Wilkes. Uh, Stuart, uh, number Cook?
Yes, aye.
Thank you. Number Wilkes?
Aye.
Number Loda?
Aye.
Number Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Verista?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, um, so next is the site plan. Okay, so I think we have a bunch of not applicable's in here, and we'll kinda go through this like before. Um, LWRP is not applicable. Adequacy of vehicular traffic is not applicable. Adequacy of pedestrian and bicyclist access is not applicable. Compatibility of proposed uses to adjacent uses, um, there's residential and commercial. So, say that's compatible. Off-street parking, loading, and access, um, that's, I think your garage will definitely provide adequate parking. Along with your driveway. Are you in agreement with that?
Yes. Well, it's a single lane driveway, I guess, the garage for sure.
Adequacy of landscaping and screening, um, you're just replanting lawn, right?
Yeah.
So it'll basically match what you have now.
Yes. And it actually will improve screening.
Signage is not applicable. Um, adequacy of outdoor lighting, um, and your proposing fixtures that comply with village code. Um, next thing was drainage, adequacy of drainage and stormwater systems. Um, you had an engineer design the drainage system and incorporate it into your plans. Um, adequacy of water and sanitary sewer systems, uh, though they're not being changed, correct?
Yeah.
And again, adequacy of waste and trash is not applicable. Uh, what else do we have? Snow removal is not applicable. I don't see any adverse impacts on health, safety, and general welfare.
No.
So, say no again. And we don't have Steve here to comment, so I think we can cross out fifteen.
Can you say something about enhanced aesthetic value?
For the porch? For which one?
Well, for, um.
We can add, we can add number sixteen, we can say they.
Yeah, I, okay.
We could add something.
Yeah.
With, so, we'll make the front setback conform with neighbors and improve appearance. We can tweak the language later. Okay, um, again, we'll need to fill in the date of the site plan. The conditions of approval, um, I get the, the ones that are in here are the same as before, HPP approval, um, shall expire. So they, uh, and expires in one year if they don't get a building permit. Want to add the same one in lighting as we did before? Standard light color?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. You have no trouble using standard colored lights, correct?
I don't, I mean, LEDs, sometimes you can turn them to different lumens.
No, so the color, if, the color of the light bulbs, we're looking for standard incandescent colored lights.
Soft white.
Soft white, exactly.
Sure, yeah, that should be fine.
Bright blue.
Yeah, oh yeah, I wouldn't want that either, but you're, yeah, that's a good point, yes. Thanks.
Okay. Um, all right, any, I think that covers it. Any other additions, anyone?
I have a question about the project and the project title and the action. You guys aren't gonna do anything with the entrances, right?
Me, um, you meaning the?
The side entrance?
Oh, right.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're probably, we're gonna probably defer that to the, to the H, the Stark Preservation Board, but we, we kind of have gone back on keeping that right side entrance for access to the driveway.
Right.
Rather than removing.
Do we need to change?
Change the.
Are you, are you amending your application to remove the changes to the entrance?
Does that mean we have to come back?
Right, that's a right answer.
We need the side entrance.
We didn't talk about.
Or you changed, is this gonna change?
There's, there's, so in the previous terms, it didn't change, because the house is a concrete step, so I thought that was more of an HPPZ thing where if they wanted aesthetically to keep it, they would, if not, we're kinda open to going, you know.
Yeah, so, so the options are, you either build it or you don't build it, is that right?
Or you remove it, remove it or keep it.
So.
So that would be, it would be under HPP.
Yeah, that's, that's a door, correct?
It's, it's, so it's a co, I can play a picture, actually. It's a, it's a side entrance right off the driveway.
Here, right.
We originally were gonna take it off, um, but.
This one?
Uh, that's, so that's the other side, yeah, that's the, that's the other one.
Oh, this?
Yes, that one, yeah. So it's kinda like a little roadie stuff.
So basically, that's in the application right now, to remove that. And that doesn't trigger site plan review.
No, it doesn't look like the footprint is gonna change at all.
The footprint won't change.
Just the sidewalk is still there, right?
The sidewalk will be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we're okay.
That's it, yeah, okay. Good question, though. I did mention that last meeting, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Were you asking to take that part out of the action on Thursday?
I was wondering if we were supposed to, and we don't need to.
Okay, any other comments, Scott? All right, then I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for site plans uh, for the reasons discussed with the conditions discussed.
I'll second. How about Shannon? Remember Shannon?
I'll leave it to the members, no problem. Uh, number Cook?
Aye.
Number Wilkes?
Aye.
Number Loda?
Aye.
Number Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Verista?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, you're done with us, so you get to congratulate us. HPP.
All right, thank you for your time.
You don't wanna see us again, you know, hey?
Good luck.
For all your time and review, we appreciate it, the feedback is phenomenal, so thank you.
You're welcome, good luck.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and Fifty State Street. I don't see anyone here.
Mr. Pierce is here, I'm not really sure.
Well, I'm sure he's interested in what's.
Is this all for informational?
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Well, he's not here to present it.
He lives right over there. Okay.
So you know him?
I do.
How did, how do you guys know about him?
Um, yeah, we don't have anyone else online, well, we have one person online.
Do we have anyone, is there anyone here from Fifty State Street?
Nope.
Who'd you present?
Um, and the one person hasn't said that they're speaking about Fifty State, sure, that's online right now.
Okay, well, if nobody's here, then.
I can relate to the building inspector who could communicate with, or the person.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so maybe add it to our next meeting agenda, or it may not. We'll see, okay.
Actually, I, I, I would like special meetings to remain special.
Yeah, yes, yeah, so I think keeping new stuff off the agenda is desired, I would agree with that.
Right.
Okay. Um, did, did, Art, did you have a comment?
Sure, yeah, just wondering if I could ask you a couple of basic questions, or if you want to make some.
I don't, I don't really know much information about what they're doing. All I know, all I've heard is they're looking to make a building and.
Someone attack one moment.
And move the trash dumpster, that's what I've heard. And that trash dumpster is supposed to go somewhere, I mean, where was it in here? So, you can look at a plan yourself if you want. So they showed a dumpster over here?
It's in online, did you just have?
Oh, I saw that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, all the information that we have is what's online.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
At this point, that's all the information we have. Right. And the person who's gonna present it isn't here to add to it, so.
Okay, so it's just informational, maybe another informational four in the application.
I have no idea.
Okay, great, good. Uh, can you make a couple of comments in general?
If it's about.
It's positive, is it?
Well, but if it's about this Fifty State Street thing.
About quarter.
Okay, it's not about that, okay.
Name and address. Name and address.
Our pure seventy state street. There's a lot, I appreciate the thoroughness of the board, and it's through the secret checklist, it's very thorough.
Okay.
Is this new video, audio, because hearing you online was much clearer than the village board needs. Uh, I'm sure that something changed.
Um, it depends on who's moving a lot of papers at the time, or if there's background noise in the gallery, as to what you hear online, yes. I have been on those sites and during the minutes that I can tell the difference if people are just a little more still. Yes, that's a huge difference.
Seems to be something more than, than what we had.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, uh, one quick thing, just a suggestion, and maybe that's part of your, uh, comments already. But I noticed in the first application, they had all the existing and the holes in the code information there, so the board, remember, you didn't have to kinda calculate, et cetera.
Aye.
But the second one apparently didn't, so whether or not it's required, and they just kinda forgot to put it through. And then I think that's critical for the benefit of the board and obviously to keep things moving, but more importantly, so you're not scrambling and guessing. So all that data should be on there, as well as obviously with the stamp, sign, PD, or the LS survey site, and that's another thing I've noticed in the past, and missing on some applications. But the fact that the first one seemed to be pretty much impeccable, including all those.
They, um, I'll just tell you, one of the applications, the applicant made some of the drawings themselves.
Yeah.
So, which is why I said, um, they had a stamped site plan, but they haven't hired an architect yet, so their drawings, they prepared themselves for a.
But the site plan should be stamp, P, P, uh, question answer there, right, correct?
Uh, there, they had, I saw, they.
No, these were, these were, in general, I've seen other applicants.
I, that's something I normally look for in, in the process is.
It isn't required.
Um, if it's done by a professional, um, we can't, I mean, the issue is, we can't review things made by an unqualified professional. So that's, um, so it's like, you gotta sign your tax forms, and use an accountant to prepare them, for example.
Perfect, that's exactly, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the person online just wanted to hear the presentation. It doesn't sound like they are presenting for Fifty State.
Okay. So did we actually get an application, or they just wanted to present information for the patient?
It's informational only, definitely, um, and I, Steve and I looked this up, because I know Chair Verista and I have talked about the board seeing informational, you know, and address during regular meetings, and the code actually calls it a pre-application.
Gotcha.
And so if we want to be clear about that.
Uh, pre-application conference is actually different. Um, there is, that's a separate thing, that's where a member of, like, two members of each board involved can get together, talk with the applicant.
So, do you wanna continue to hear information only? Um, because you and I talk about this a lot, and I still.
I, I think.
I still, what are we doing with information only when people are asking, so.
Any thoughts about that?
Or if we keep it to the pre-application conference, which is in the code?
I mean, I, I've never really been real excited about the pre-application conferences and codes. I think, Susan, you and I did one of those for, um, church.
Correct.
And I don't, I think things should come before the board, instead of one or two people.
I agree.
Um, I don't like having private meetings. So, I think we've had some of those that have gone okay, but the main things that we, we, we discuss are, you know, what are some of the code requirements, and what are typical things we look at? But people are expecting us to comment on whether we like the application or not, that's the type of thing we like to avoid.
Right.
We, so we can't prejudge anything.
Yeah, he was pretty clear about that before he.
So as long as someone is clear that we can't actually review the application, and all we can really state is types of things we look at, and.
Couldn't that be done, though, as part of the conversation with Steve?
Yeah.
Why, why, why would they have to come before us to hear that if we, you know?
I'll, I'll let him reply to, yeah, I'll let him send you guys an email about that. I'm not sure at what point that they're asking to come in to the board, because.
I know people come into the architectural board to find, to get some initial feedback as to whether they should make some major changes or not, but everyone's a little bit guarded about what they can say before they have a formal application. So it's always tricky.
I, I think it's just cleaner to, uh, review an actual application. You don't wanna set up, uh, expectations, or.
That's true.
Um, you know, have a comment carry some weight that it shouldn't, shouldn't have. I don't know if that's what I.
Well, you're not required to entertain information only, um, meetings.
Yeah, good.
And applications. So then the question is, if you're gonna open it up like that, then what are you gonna do with members of the public who may wanna ask questions for informational?
Right, right.
It can get out of hand pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I'm for.
That's true, that's a good point.
Application.
So, with, so what are we saying for Fifty State? Are we saying we prefer not to have an information only, and just wait for an application?
Sounds like it.
And then we'll keep that consistent moving forward when people are asking to see the board for information.
Any, any question that they would ask of us, they could ask Steve.
Right, yeah.
Must give us some other reason.
Well, see what he says.
I guess.
Know obviously that we talked about this, and then he can, he can respond to the board in any email.
I guess I'd like to maybe keep the possibility open for, if, if there's some reason why, um, it would make sense to do, but I, I do think it, it, it makes sense to not have it be kind of the regular course.
Do we want to, you can just forward the request along, perhaps, and we can.
I like that, and I know trying to keep on a timeline of like, letting the chair know when we have applications coming up, and maybe setting a cutoff if people do wanna do information only, so the board has an idea that's coming and before the agenda goes out.
Yeah, I guess I do wanna, kind of like, just putting myself in the shoes of somebody that's got an application before, or, you know, they're about to make an application. Um, I can see how it may be frustrating if they're like, I don't really understand what we need to do, I, you know, I talked to Steve and I still don't get it, can I get some more guidance or whatever?
Well, then they should find an attorney, right, or something.
Well, that's fair, but I also.
This board to guide people through the.
No, that's true, but I, I, I also feel, you know, to the extent that we can just help out residents that are just trying to comply.
Do, do you remember?
I know she was.
There was another Sutherland application?
Oh my gosh.
Oh.
Oh yeah, there's history.
Well, maybe we can close the meeting.
Yeah, let's close the meeting.
I just had one more thing about, about the June meeting. Um, we don't have any applications. Um, we would have four resolutions to approve, which gets these turned in for editing with Chair Verista and member Hoppin in two separate minutes, that would, that'd be the business at the June meeting.
And, um, there was some discussion about talking about some more of our procedures and policies and such. But you don't have any, you're talking about maybe making an information packet for, um, site plan review, that would help inform residents.
That's my summer project.
But that's a long way off.
Yeah, yes, and that discussion, give to you guys, like, when you wanna have it. I just wanted to let you know what was ahead for June, and how you wanted to proceed.
So, I guess we have a meeting, and, um, just do minutes, is what it is.
Okay.
And we can talk about other housekeeping stuff.
Sounds good to me.
Nothing more from you, if there's any other members.
Okay, um, well, I think we can adjourn the meeting then, and we may, maybe if we have a few questions for Mindy, we can ask her afterwards. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Number Cook?
Aye.
Number Wilkes?
Aye.
Number Loda?
Aye.
Number Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Verista?
Aye.
Passed it.